All right, today is Ruth. And a couple of things about the book of Ruth. Ruth is is one of my favorite books of the Bible. In part, just because it's one of the it's one of the things that I can read and just be so proud of the Bible. That might sound kind of funny, but the Bible really is a an amazingly well put together, amazingly well written. It is it is artistic and beautiful, and I think we don't always recognize that and we don't always. We don't always appreciate just how what good literature the Bible is. And part of that is because it has been translated. The I had a professor at Martin Luther College. He was a Latin professor and one of the first things that he told us when he handed us a something to translate. I think it was it doesn't matter what it was, but it was it was poetry and he said, the definition of poetry is poetry is that which defies translation. Translate, he literally handed he said that then handed to us and said, translate like, well, you just said it's impossible. Because so much of poetry is it's wordplay, it's it's cultural things that you would just understand if you were part of the culture, right? And and you it's so hard to bring that through into a new language. Ruth is a short story. And it is quite possibly the 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 most beautifully crafted short story to ever be written. And so I want to get into that in just a second, but first kind of where we're at as far as time goes, I'll share my screen here. And we can look at that that timeline again, just to give us an idea of of where we're at in the whole history of the world, really. And so Ruth is right here in the middle during that that age when the judges were were ruling in Israel. So Rahab was was last time we met, that was at the the conquest of the promised land, and now Ruth is somewhere in the judges. Exactly where? Not exactly sure, other than by genealogy, which is the next thing. If you look at this one, you see Rahab, Salmon married Rahab, and then we we have Boaz and Ruth here. And so it's only a few short generations then to King David. And then our topic for two weeks from now, David and Bathsheba and their their son Solomon. So interestingly enough, you know, just keeping and remembering, yeah, we've got two in a row. People in the line of the Savior Rahab, one of the Canaanites, and then Ruth, a Moabite in the very next generation. So here. Next one. Now, narrative art in Ruth, I'm gonna pull up my own copy here so that you can see what I'm looking at. Now, obviously, this is Hebrew. I know you can't read that. That's okay. In this document that you can download if you want, I've got it in English as well. But I wanted you to see it in Hebrew so that you can just appreciate the the artistry of how it's put together. So this is the whole book of Ruth right here, four chapters. You can fit it on two pages if you make the font small enough, right? Up here, can you see this key? The key there says the the parts highlighted in yellow is the introduction and conclusion. You can see that here and here. Seventy-one Hebrew words each. It matches. And and when you read them, you wouldn't think to yourself, oh, surely they cut words out or something like that to make it seventy-one? No, it's just so artistically created that the that the introduction and conclusion balance each other that way. Seventy-one words apiece. Then the the book can be or the story, I'm just gonna call it the story because that's how it's how it's written. I mean, it's a true story, but it's written like a short story. Is divided into four episodes. Conveniently, the the chapters kind of reflect that. You see the chapter numbers there, too. But each episode has an opener with a foreshadowing. So you see that you've got the green, each one of those is an opening of an episode, and each one of those foreshadows what's going to happen in that episode. And each episode has a closer, which also foreshadows what's going to happen. The 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 first chapter ends with they arrived in Bethlehem just as the barley harvest was beginning. Which is a really interesting foreshadowing, because the whole first chapter is a huge theme of it is all the things that Naomi loses. And and the hopelessness that she feels. And and the the chapter ends with this one little line that goes, yeah, but harvest is coming. It's a statement of hope. Right there at the end that foreshadows the hope that is coming in the next episode. So each one of those is that that closing that has a a foreshadowing as well. Oh. Looks like I messed up. There we go. The center point. The exact center point of the book right here. This is the turning point in the whole book. At the beginning, you can see Naomi and Ruth kind of in dire circumstances, and then right there at the exact center of the book is when Ruth comes back in verse nineteen and and Naomi asks her, where 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 did you work today that you got all this food? And then verse twenty is Naomi saying, oh, that man is one of our kinsmen redeemers. Right? So right there at the exact center of the book is the hinge on which the whole book folds. And before I I tried to format it so that you could see just that that this really did line up there, but it it does right there at the center of the book is that hinge. And then finally, the epilogue, the line of the Savior is the very end. And so you have this beautiful short story, and then at the very end, it reminds you, yeah, this is the line of King David, this is ultimately then the line of the Savior. So now, just kind of taking a look at the that in English. Here we have the it doesn't do me any good to point like this, as if you can see where I'm pointing. You can see here is that introduction, seventy-one words long in Hebrew. Here is that first episode intro opener with the the foreshadowing there. When Naomi heard that heard in Moab that the Lord had come to the aid of his people by providing food for them, she and her daughters-in-law prepared to return home from there. The return home and and the relationship of Naomi and her daughters-in-law is that the the really the the topic of that whole episode, right? Summarized and introduced for you right there so nicely in that first line. Then verse twenty-two, like I said earlier, arriving in Bethlehem as the barley harvest was beginning. Hopelessness here, and then that last part, ah, but hope is coming, hope is coming in the next episode. Now, the second episode, now Naomi had a relative on her husband's side, a man of standing from the clan of Alimelech, whose name was Boaz. Yeah, that that the relative on her husband's side. Ah, the Redeemer idea, man of standing. The fact that they have lost everything, and yet God is going to provide for them through this man who has the means to do so. And even his name, his name is Boaz means in him is strength. These women who are very weak and vulnerable, who gets introduced as a kind of a foreshadowing, oh, a guy named in him is strength. Beautiful foreshadow. Here you can see that that hinge, that center point, the turning point of the whole book. The Lord bless him, Naomi said to her daughter-in-law, he has not not stopped showing his kindness to the living and the dead. She added, this man is our close relative. He is one of our guardian redeemers. So right there, that is the the hinge on which the entire book turns, and it is exactly in the center of the book. At the end of the second episode, this little phrase, and she lived with her mother-in-law. As someone who spent a little bit of time living with his parents as an adult before I got married to my wonderful wife now. That Ruth, she lived with her mother-in-law, that kind of like kind of shouts at you, that's not really where she belongs. In a way, that that's not really where she would be happiest. She lived with her mother-in-law, which you can see then at the beginning of the third episode, one day Ruth's mother-in-law Naomi said to her, my daughter, I must find a home for you where you'll be well taken, well well provided for. Yeah, again, what's that whole episode about? That. And then at the end of that one, for the man will not rest until the matter is settled today. What's the whole next episode about? Boaz getting after it and making sure that Ruth becomes his wife, as you can see in the intro. Meanwhile, Boaz went up to the town gate and sat down there just sat down there just as the guardian redeemer he had mentioned came along. Boaz said, come over here, my friend, and sit down. So he went over and sat down. Again, that introduction. And then finally, the last little closer for that that episode. The people of the town are speaking a blessing to Naomi, saying, through the offspring the Lord gives you by this young woman, may your family be like that of Perez, whom Tamar bore to Judah. Interestingly enough, we just studied that a couple of weeks ago, didn't we? These these Bible stories that that Matthew in that first genealogy of Jesus in his gospel, these stories that he referenced, they were well known. That's why he referenced them. They come up. And then, of course, you have the 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 conclusion that that, yeah, that seventy-one word conclusion. I it it struck me that like, you know, Twitter, you know, when people will write out a tweet, that's now two hundred and eighty characters is what you get. When people are constrained to like two hundred and eighty characters, Twitter is not filled with beautiful art and and literature. It is really hard to make something that that communicates beautifully when you're in that constraint. The author of the book of Ruth, seventy-one words exactly? Sure, I've got it. Absolutely amazing. And then finally, that genealogy of David, taking us from Perez that we talked about before. Salmon, who was the husband of Rahab, Boaz, the husband of Ruth, Obed, their son, Obed, the father of Jesse, and Jesse, the father of David. So it just looking at the book like this, you can see just how precisely it is put together. And and yet, as you read it, it still read, it doesn't read like it's it's precise and wooden, it reads like a beautiful story. So to be able to combine that preciseness and that that literary smoothness and beauty, I couldn't imagine trying to write something that precisely. Christine?
Is this attachment? I don't see it on our
It is there, yes, it is narrative art in Ruth.
Oh. I I'm looking at details, details, Hebrew edition.
Oh, you gotta get up to resources. We're still in resources. Sorry about that. I should have and next time you don't know know what I'm what I'm showing you, speak up faster. I I should have made it more clear where where it was than you could have been maybe looking at it in a way that was more convenient for you. Sorry about that. So now, so that's that one. The next resource, just to just to show you how far this really goes, how beautifully set up and put together the book of Ruth really is. These come from a a paper written by a professor at Liberty University. If you want to see the paper, you can follow that link there. But this is just the introduction and the conclusion, right? Chapter one, verses one to five and four thirteen to seventeen. In the middle, there it says length in Hebrew, seventy-one words, seventy-one words, matches up perfectly, right? The circumstances. A famine in Bethlehem and a wedding in Bethlehem. About a wedding feast is about as different from a famine as you can get. Right? That that the but there's that parallelism of this happened, but this balances it out. I guess is the best way I could say. The family status. Leaving the land and and they're endangered. Four thirteen seventeen, they're back in the land and they're reestablished. Overall mood, marriage, then death. Four thirteen seventeen, marriage, then life, the birth of Obed. God's hand and hand of blessing, Naomi says that it's withheld, that she feels barren. And that is that God's hand and blessing in the in the in the conclusion is bestowed upon them with conception and birth. Possibility of help in one, one to five, no hope in sight. Four thirteen to seventeen, the redeemers Boaz and Obed. Status of Ruth and and her significance to Naomi, a widow of a deceased son. Which I I would have to think would sometimes be difficult, too. I'm sure Naomi was happy to have Naomi around, but also every time she would look at her, it would be like, well, yeah, my son's gone. She's here, but my son's gone. That would be a reminder there. Significance of Ruth or significance to Naomi, better than seven sons is how she's described in the conclusion. Naomi's emotions, she holds Ruth and Orpah close in grief and emptiness. And then in four thirteen to seventeen, the author manages to to mention that she held Obed close in joyfulness. So yeah. And then finally, literary function introductory book and concluding bookend. Even in just that that introduction and conclusion, they mirror each other beautifully. It's it's amazingly amazingly constructed and written. And if you want to see just how far that goes, I'm not going to go through all of this here. But this is the entire book. Here is that first that that introduction. Here's that conclusion. And everything surrounding that middle portion, that hinge that the whole book centers around, everything has its point and counterpoint. So the central focus, letter D there is, you know, that God is is blessing them through Boaz. And then you can see setting harvest field, immediate provision, setting harvest field, longer term provision, hopeless widows go back to Jerusalem, hopeful widows taken care of in the gates of Jerusalem, Bethlehem, excuse me, emptied family home provision, lost husband and two sons, filled family home provision, Ruth better than seven sons in Obed. Right? The whole book is constructed to balance and match and just be a beautiful short story. So for those of you who who jumped on just after I started, what I what I wanted to kind of show you here is this, this book of Ruth is one of the reasons why I'm proud of the Bible. The Bible is fantastic literature. The Holy Spirit, not not only did the Holy Spirit inspire it to be the very words of God, but but also used very talented people who who use their gifts in beautiful ways to give us an amazing book that we get to study, and I'm just thankful for that and proud of it. So Book of Ruth. Amazing literature. Wanted to make sure you all got to see that. I think. And so that was the structure of the book of Ruth there. If you'd like to open up Ruth's the Ruth scripture readings, really, we're just looking at Ruth, chapter one. So if you want to look at it in your Bible, that's just fine. If you want to look at it here, I've got that set up for you. Any questions about, you know, the the whole idea of Ruth as narrative art? Before we move on.
Do we know who the author is?
We do not. Some have posited Samuel as the author. Especially with the the genealogy of David at the end of it. Obviously, the book was not written like, you know, a month after the the, you know, the story ended, right? It was it was written afterwards. And so I I would say either maybe it would be Samuel or maybe one of the other psalm writers in David's court, like Asaph or or someone like that. But we we really honestly don't have any anything to hang our hat on as far as who it is. Whoever they were, they were an artist. All right. Getting into this stuff then. So big idea for Ruth. Ruth and Naomi were an odd pair. Age, nationality, culture, religion, and even grief could have separated them. Instead, Ruth and Naomi were closer than closed, close. God blessed them with each other. Does God still make odd pairs? How does he use you in the life of others and others in your life? It's we just recently had a staff retreat for for the whole St. Paul's Church and School, you know, a good time for us to to study together, learn from each other, get to know each other better. And I'm I'm consistently blessed and reminded that I am blessed whenever I get to get together with, you know, like that group, go look around and go, wow, there's a lot of people here do things that I could never do. I look around our congregation, I'm just brothers and sisters in Christ. So hence, yes, I think God does still make odd pairs, but let's let's look at it a little closer. First, Ruth, chapter one, verses one to five, I'll read that, and then we'll get into this question. Ruth, chapter one, in the days when the judges ruled, there was a famine in the land. So a man from Bethlehem and Judah, together with his wife and two sons, went to live for a while in the country of Moab. The man's name was Alimelech, his wife's name was Naomi, and the names of his two sons were Malin and Killian. They were Ephritites from Bethlehem, Judah, and they went to Moab and lived there. Now, Alimelech, Naomi's husband died, and she was left with her two sons. They married Moabite women, one named Orpah and the other Ruth. After they had lived there about ten years, both Malin and Killian also died, and Naomi was left without her two sons and her husband. There we go. So the story begins with the phrase, in the days when the judges ruled, which is kind of a hint or innuendo or something, right? If you've done some reading in the book of Judges, how would you characterize that time in Israel's history? When you hear when the in the days when the judges ruled, what are the what are some of the names or stories or or situations that pop into your head?
Here, the end of the chapter, as it usually mentions, everyone did like whatever they wanted to do, whatever they felt like doing.
Yeah, it's one of the refrains of the book of Judges is like, there was no king, everybody did what they said saw fit. Charmaine?
Samson, Samson, Deborah.
Yeah, Samson, Deborah, you think of especially Samson. What kind of guy was Samson? I mean, obviously, you know, strong.
Immoral, a bit immoral.
A bit immoral? Right? Impulsive? Very impulsive. Yeah, I I think, yes, Samson is is one that you could look at. And and Samson is in some ways, I think, a a picture of the people of Israel at that time in general. The people of Israel were pretty immoral. Pretty pretty impulsive, largely you look through the the book of Judges. Yeah, I think of the the end of the book of Judges, where you have this this, you know, this this horrifying story of this woman who who ends up being being raped outside the house, and then her body got cut up and sent all over the place. And and a lot of the book of Judges reads like a like you're reading the scandal sheet of the newspaper, right? Oh, man, that's weird. What about the book of Ruth matches your characterizations? What doesn't? Because these are the same time, right? You look at Ruth, you look at Boaz, you look at all the people involved. I I wouldn't characterize any of them as impulsive or immoral or violent or rebellious or any of those things.
They did leave their promised land.
Interestingly enough, yes, and and also married Moabite women, which they they were not supposed to do. And also the fact that they they stayed there ten years. I mean, maybe the famine lasted that long, but wow, yeah, I I think that does it does imply a little something about the the spiritual condition of the of the Alimelech household, Alimelech and Naomi household. But there are good things, too, which we'll get to, and I'm sure you would you would say the same. But you look, especially, yeah, the the rest of the book of Ruth, it really is a bright spot. It's a it's helpful for me to remember that even when things aren't looking great, that God does have a way of preserving a remnant. That if I look around the world around me and I see, oh, man, it's like the time of the judges, all these terrible things are happening. Maybe I should just take a deep breath and look a little closer, and I might find myself some Ruth's and Naomi's and Boaz's and Boaz's whole whole household. You know, later on, when when Boaz is talking to his harvesters, and just then Boaz arrived from Bethlehem and greeted the harvesters, the Lord be with you. The Lord bless you, they answered. This is great. Let's not allow ourselves to become so focused on the negative that we miss the the blessings and faithfulness of our God, even during dark and difficult times. Next one. Details, 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 Hebrew edition. Ruth, one to five again. So in verse one, we hear about two places, Bethlehem and the country of Moab. Now, when you hear Bethlehem, you probably just think birthplace of Jesus, that's it, you know. But do you know what the word Bethlehem means in Hebrew? Literally, it means house of bread. And the country of Moab, there there's similarly in in English, if I if I talk about a a space of land, a space of open land, I could call it a meadow. I could call it a field. I could call it a plain. Of those three, which one makes you think of food? Meadow, field, or plain? Probably field, right? Farmer's field. This word is the in Hebrew is 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 the word used for like a farmer's field, fields. All right, so they they are leaving the house of bread to go to the fields of Moab. How would those two names tug at Naomi's heartstrings? Imagine that you live in a place called house of bread, and you're struggling to feed your family. Wouldn't that just tug at you and eat at you? Yeah, every time you you every time somebody talks about the the place where you live, a house of bread, yeah, not a house of bread for me. Not a house of bread for my family. You go to the fields of Moab, I'm having to leave my my homeland because I have to go to someplace where there's food. There's there's at least there's food in Moab, you know, the I see a I see a hint of the the struggle and the the hurt and the pain that's that's in this family, just for the fact that they have to leave their home, or or that they they feel like they have to. They make that choice to and and ultimately, they're doing it because they need food. The next one, the English word sons is used in verses one, two, three, four, and five. Every verse of this of this intro has the word sons in English. But in Hebrew, the word isn't the same every time. In verses one, two, three, and four, it's the Hebrew word word Ben, son. Like Benjamin is Jacob's son, son of my right hand. That's just Ben, right? In verse five, it is the Hebrew word Yelid, which which is the word for boy. Remember, this guy's been married for like they they've been living in 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 Moab for enough years that this guy's married and all of that. And yet, it's the word for boy or the one born? Now, verses one, two, three, and four, talks about her son, her son, her son, her son. And then verse five, but Malin and Killian also died, and Naomi was left without her two boys and her husband. How's that tug on your heartstrings? I I see some moms. The one born from you. When the one the one who who you gave birth to gets sick. Get, you know, you see them weakening and and find, you know, imagine them passing away. I hope I hope none of you have had to experience that. But that that little detail, that the word for son changes from just normal son to her boys died. Again, the the artistry of it, and and yet also the helping us understand why Naomi's going to be in the place where she's at. Hey, thoughts, questions about that stuff? That's that's kind of more more than more than discussion. It's more things that I just wanted to point out to you again, just to get you into the story and and appreciate how how expertly it's it's written. So a friend walks up, puts a hand on your shoulder and asks, how you doing? When hard times come, we're concerned about the spiritual condition of the people we love. "When hard times come, we're concerned about the spiritual condition of the people we love." Compare verses one to five with verses twenty to twenty-one. What sh- what kind of shape is Naomi in? What is your reaction to Naomi's spiritual condition? So one to five, we've already kind of talked about, that's, that's, that just the the tragedy that strikes Naomi's family, that she loses her husband, she loses both of her sons. Uh, and then Ruth, chapter one, verses twenty and twenty-one, read, read this way. "Don't call me Naomi," she told them, because Naomi means sweet. Uh, "Call me Mara, because the, because the Almighty has made my life very bitter." Mara means bitter. So she's saying, "Don't call me sweet, call me bitter, because the Lord has made my, or, uh, the Almighty has made my life very bitter." "I went away full, but the Lord has brought me back empty. Why call me Naomi? The Lord has afflicted me, the Almighty has brought misfortune upon me." So what's, what's her spiritual condition?
Emptied out, she's.
Yeah, emptied out? Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Christine, if you had to there.
She's out, she sounds almost full of despair.
Yeah. Yeah, despair would be a, a, a good word.
I was thinking dispirited too. The same thing.
Yeah. How is she viewing God at this point?
She doesn't see his love.
Certainly does not. Right? What does she see him as?
Judge.
Judge.
Oh.
Yeah.
Some news taken away from, everything away from her.
Yep.
Punishable.
Punisher, uh, uh, did you say horrible?
I said cruel.
Cruel, yes, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I yeah, that would, that would be a word that would make sense. Yeah. For her, God is her enemy, is how, how she's viewing him right now. He's afflicting me. He is, he is, he is this cruel Mimi um, who, who's out to get me. Um, can you blame her? I mean, obviously, we can stand, sit here in our comfortable homes um, and, and say, you know, ah, Naomi shouldn't have felt that way, but, um, this was an incredibly difficult time for her. Um,
And, and you have to remember that she didn't have the word of God like we have today. And she didn't know Jesus like we know Jesus, who showed God's love.
Uh huh.
Pagan land.
What was that?
She was living in a pagan land for ten years.
Also true, yeah, yeah, we had, we had talked, uh, about in the, um, Judah and Tamar, uh, account, it this is an example of someone who left their brothers, right? And, and, uh, they lost, like, they lost a great deal of spiritual support in that way. Uh, in some ways, it's almost kind of amazing that through all of this, um, there's any faith left at all. Um, and, and as we'll see, um, yeah, there is some. Um, but, uh, it's a, uh, just a, a little bit of a reminder too, that when, when people are really hurting, that may not be the time to look at them and say, well, you shouldn't be feeling that way. Uh, well, maybe they should be feeling that way, but it's, uh, um, keeping in mind who the Lord really is, is gonna be key. Uh, anything else about the first five verses there? Otherwise, we'll move on from that and, uh, do a little reading here. So next, uh, chunk will be Ruth, one, six, uh, through fifteen. "When Naomi heard in Moab," um, in fact, let me pull that up for you. I think I've got it right here. Yeah. "So when Naomi heard in Moab that the Lord had come to the aid of his people by providing food for them, she and her daughters-in-law prepared to return home from there. With her two daughters-in-law, she left the place where she had been living and set out on the road that would take them back to the land of Judah. Then Naomi said to her two daughters-in-law, 'Go back, each of you to your mother's home. May the Lord show you kindness as you have shown to your dead husbands and to me, as you have shown kindness to your dead husbands and to me. May the Lord grant that each of you will find rest in the home of another husband.' Then she kissed them goodbye, and they wept aloud and said to her, 'We will go back with you to your people.' But Naomi said, 'Return home, my daughters. Why would you come with me? Am I going to have any more sons who could become your husbands? Return home, my daughters. I'm too old to have another husband. Even if I thought there was still hope for me, even if I had a husband tonight and then gave birth to sons, would you wait until they grew up? Would you remain unmarried for them? No, my daughters. It is more bitter that for me than for you, because the Lord's hand has turned against me. At this, they wept aloud. Then Orpah kissed her mother-in-law goodbye, but Ruth clung to her. 'Look,' said Naomi, 'Your sister-in-law is going back to her people and her gods. Go back with her.'" So some interesting timing. Ruth, one, uh, six to fifteen. Naomi, Orpah, and Ruth are on the road back to Bethlehem. Suddenly Naomi turns to her daughters-in-law and tells them not to come with her to Bethlehem and to go back to their families. Interesting timing. Why do you think Naomi waited until now to tell Orpah and Ruth to turn back? When would have been the convenient time for Orpah and Ruth?
Before they left.
Before they left?
Before they left.
Yeah. So why does she wait until now? And I know we're doing a little bit of mind reading, um, but just try to put yourself into Naomi's, um, mind and heart. Why would she wait until now?
Maybe she hadn't really thought about it before. Um, you know, when they were packing up and getting ready to go, and it was as they were walking that she really kind of thought it through.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's definitely a possibility. It's one of the ones that I thought of too, and, and there's no right or wrong answer to this. It's just as we think about it, I think we're going to appreciate the account better. So as she's walking along, every step she takes, what's, what, what, what is, what is that one step closer to for her?
Home.
Home, but home without her husband and her sons, right? It takes her one step closer to going back to what? Right? All of her hopes for Bethlehem would have been tied up with her husband and her sons and, and their, their, yeah, their promised land, their portion of the promised land, their ancestral land, which she's not gonna be able to do anything with, with her two daughters-in-law. Right? So each step is taking her closer and closer to and making her think more and more about what, what hope do I have there? What does that, what does every step take her daughters-in-law then closer to? And farther from? Right? Closer to that kind of same hopeless situation, farther from the place where they would have the best shot. Um, so, yeah, think that through too. Um, what are, yeah, uh, Charmaine, you had made the point earlier that Malin and Killian married Moabite women, which they were not supposed to do. So now, a Moabite woman is gonna go back to Bethlehem. What are her prospects gonna be like? Naturally speaking, you go, go not only, not only is she going back to a place where she has no connections, but she's going back to a place where there's literally a law on the books that says, "Nobody marry this woman." It's a rough place to be walking toward. And as Naomi is walking toward that, perhaps, like you say, maybe she is thinking that through as she goes. "I'm dooming my daughters-in-law." And maybe that realization is dawning on her. Also, um, when you see Ruth and Orpah's reaction, how do they react?
They don't wanna leave her.
They don't wanna leave, they love her, right? They, they cling to her. Do you think Naomi was looking forward to having that conversation?
Nope.
Not at all. Because just as Ruth and Orpah are all Naomi has left, in a way, Naomi is all that Ruth and Orpah have left. Yeah, so, um, eh, have you ever put off having a conversation you didn't really want to have until the last possible opportunity to have it?
Of course.
Uh, I think, I think that might have been part of it too. Maybe she even did realize it earlier. Um, and just, she, she couldn't bring herself to have that conversation. Um, whatever the actual motivation or actual reason why she didn't have that conversation right away, whatever it was, um, I think we can see in all the possibilities, every possibility we look at goes, man, it must've been hard. It must've been really hard to have that conversation. Um, next one, seeing in the dark, uh, and I, and I, uh, uh, the, the idea of, of seeing in the dark, my reason for, for entitling the question that, that is we, we've established pretty well that Naomi is in a very dark place. Right? Um, and and sometimes it is really hard to see when you're in that dark place, who, who God is and what, uh, what's, what he's like. Um, at the end of verse thirteen, we hear Naomi speak to her daughters-in-law. Right, she's speaking to Ruth and Orpah, and she says, "It is more bitter for me than for you, because the Lord's hand has turned against me." Are her words true? My advice for tackling this one is she, there's a lot packed into her little statement there. Don't try to just say, "Are, the whole thing is true, the whole thing is false." Just take a chunk. Say, "Is that true?" For example, um, the, the second chunk, "The Lord's hand has turned against me." True or false?
In her eyes, it, it, it has.
Yeah, I mean, she's got a good bit of evidence that God's against her, right though?
They're all in, they're all in pretty bleak situation.
Yeah.
Because she's older.
Hers is especially rough, being, being an older widow, right? Is the Lord's hand actually against her? No. But all the evidence she can see with her eyes is telling her that he is. How about the first half? "It is more bitter for me than for you." Remember, who's she talking to?
Daughter-in-law's.
Daughters-in-law. Is it more bitter for her than for her daughters-in-law?
She's older.
She's older.
And she thinks they could remarry possibly.
Mm-hmm.
And have children.
And perhaps, right, right? Put yourself in Ruth, Ruth and Orpah's place though for a second. How would you feel if you were a widow and somebody came to you and said, "My widowhood is worse than your widowhood"? Right, because that's kind of what she's saying.
Mm-hmm.
It, it doesn't come across real well, does it? "It's more bitter for me than for you." Yeah, I, I, I lost, and, and I'm gonna compare my loss to your loss. Um, has that ever worked well? Um, I, I, I don't think it has. Um, I think it's one of the ways that you can see just how beaten down Naomi is. She she has gotten to the point where she's, she's comparing her grief with the people who love her, who are also grieving the exact same thing. And she is, she is definitely, you know, here you can really see that she is, she is looking at, at, uh, at God and saying, "He's my enemy. He's against me." Um, so it, it has gotten very dark around her and she is, she is having a hard time seeing in the dark. Um, the beautiful thing is that neither of these things are really true. Um, the, uh, comparing grief doesn't bring comfort. Um, but the fact is, is she's not truly alone, even in her grief. Um, and then, "The Lord's hand has turned against me?" No. Um, very difficult things have happened, but God is not against her, as, as the rest of the book proves.
And, and we, knowing this story and knowing that God had a bigger plan in it all, um, can take so much comfort when we're ever pla- if we're ever placed in a position where we feel like God's against us. Because we can stop and say, "Be still, know that I am God. Remember his love for you and remember that he's, he's got it under control."
Yeah.
And then just, it helps to deal with, I would hope.
It certainly does. Um, let me see here. I'll take this. All right. One thing to keep in mind too. You can see that on my screen? Obviously, you can't read it, right? But I'm just kind of giving you the visual aid of that's the whole book of Ruth. Four pages. We are reading this whole story, or we're, we're just reading the first page, and if we wanted to, we could just read this through and we'd get the whole story right now. It, it, it would take us no time at all. The way we read and we remember God's promises, like you're saying, to remember sometimes, this took months. And we've got different harvests, we've got, you know, all of this time that passes here. Um, remembering to be patient, like you say, not, not just in, okay, uh, all I gotta do is turn the next page of my Bible, and I'll, I'll find that comfort. That's great. But in life, sometimes it takes a little longer. And, and, uh, turning the next page in our Bible and getting that instant comfort can help us as we sit through the months of, or even years of actually waiting patiently on our God who loves us. Uh, sorry, yeah, I, I, I love your point and, and, uh, it's one of the great advantages of, of reading the Bible rather than living our lives. You, you can get the comfort faster when you're reading the Bible sometime.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else there? Next one, closing your eyes in the dark. Um, thi- this is, this is the, the, the part, the thing that Naomi says that, um, that I just, oh, man, Naomi. Uh, now you're not just having trouble seeing in the dark, now you're, you're closing your eyes in the dark. Um, in verse fifteen, Naomi says, "Look, your sister-in-law is going back to her people and her gods. Go back with her." What is Naomi forgetting about the Lord?
That he is the only God.
There's that one. Yeah, go back, go back to your nonexistent gods. Uh, that, that doesn't help. So I think that's the, that's the biggest one. What else is she forgetting about the Lord? You know, fi- find some littler things that, uh, that you look at and say, what is comforting about the Lord, our God, that she is just completely closing her eyes to?
It almost sounds like she's putting them on, him on equal footing with the idol gods.
Yeah. And so then therefore, make a comparison. What, what is, what are the, what are the idols like? What is the Lord like? Think about his power.
Well, usually, false gods, they, they were always trying to appease them. And the Lord was there, you know, out of love and, and grace for his people.
And so we have a God, the, the Lord, the, that Lord, all capital letters, this faithful God, faithful to his promises, faithful in showing love. Yeah, tho- those are, those are some things she's forgetting, right? Um, yeah, how, the, how about the, uh, the, the long-term plan of the Lord versus the long-term plan of an idol? A long-term plan of, 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 of all, you know, idol worshiping? A long-term plan of 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 all, you know, idol-worshipping nations or their their religions was simply, we continue to appease the idol, and maybe he'll be nice to us, or she'll be nice to us, whatever, right? Long-term plan of the Lord, eventually, the Lord is going to send his son to die for us, and 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 that is your that is your pattern for what is the Lord like? What does the Lord do for his people? Yeah, I I've been in in mentally and spiritually dark places before, where I kind of got to this idea that um that there's nothing guaranteed to me except heaven. And it might just get worse and worse and worse until I go to heaven. So I'm really looking forward to dying. Is kind of, you know, the the mental and emotional place I was in. I wouldn't be surprised if Naomi was in a very similar spiritual and emotional place, right? And so it's easy to get into that thought process of, God didn't promise me that it's gonna get better tomorrow. God didn't promise me it's gonna get better next week. God didn't promise me it's gonna get better next month, right? And so then we we can, we can begin to have that doom and gloom idea of it's just gonna keep getting worse. And that, I think that's where Naomi was. She's saying, "Don't even call me by my name anymore. Just call me bitterness. Anytime you see me, say bitterness, because that's who I am. And if you're naming yourself that, that's what you're assuming you're going to be." Make sense? What she had forgotten was that even if the Lord has not promised me specifically that tomorrow is gonna be better than today, what is the Lord's track record? The Lord's track record is that he he turns things around in amazing ways. The Lord's track record is that he keeps his promises. The Lord's track record is that he shows love to generations of his people. Naomi's forgetting that that Naomi is is forgetting that that um while God doesn't always give us the specifics, he does give us amazing promises that we should hold on to, and he does want to bless us. God is not a meaning. Uh and and she's she's forgotten that. She's closed her eyes to it. Number seven, adios. Orpah left. Evaluate her actions. Why did she do what she did? Can you blame her? Maybe a agree, agree or disagree question. Orpah is the bad guy in this chapter.
She went with what she knew and what she thought would be safe for her.
Yep. You you what, you, her motivations aren't that hard to see. And are any of them, yeah, in and of themselves, are those motivations bad? No, she's supposed to take care of herself. Go ahead.
The sad, the sad thing is, we'll we'll most likely see Ruth in heaven, but we most likely won't see Orpah in heaven. I mean, it's possible, because if she knew-
It's possible, but we see no evidence that we should believe that.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Especially because if you if you look at, when does Orpah turn away and leave? Let's go back here. So, "The Lord's hand has turned against me," right? At this, they wept aloud again, then Orpah kissed her mother-in-law goodbye, but Ruth clung to her. So, "The Lord's hand has turned against you." Nothing, there there is no hope for me. My hope in the Lord is gone. Orpah leaves. Um and then Naomi's evaluation of that herself was, "Your sister-in-law is going back to her people and her gods." Naomi's not being a real great uh, at this point, Naomi is not being a real great um is not giving good reviews for God. Say, you, you know, one star, do not recommend. He has turned against me. He is no good for me. You should, you should go back and find a different one. Go to a different restaurant, right? It's kind of what she's saying um to to her daughters-in-law. So, Orpah, all of Orpah's motivations make sense because the Lord is not at the center of them. If the Lord was at the center of them, then none of them would make sense. But he's not. So, yeah, makes sense.
It almost sounds like Naomi is playing to Orpah's fears.
Interesting. Talk more.
Well, if I were, I've already bent to that um despair of thinking, as someone who knows the Lord, as like she does, was trying to convince me I need to go back, and this is why I need to go back. It would just feed my fear and kind of make me anxious. Yeah, I think I know, I I know that life. I need to go back to that life.
Yeah.
I do have a chance there.
Yep.
And she was feeding her fears because she was at such a low place. On a hole. Yeah, so she was feeding that to her daughter-in-law's.
You're, I think you're 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 picking it up beautifully, which makes me really excited to read the next part. We ready? Could you have something, Del?
I was just thinking that, you know, what was the custom of the day? Do do uh the widows stay with the with their family by custom, or do they go back to their own family? What was the custom in the in that in their land? What was normal?
I think you can see that in the way that uh Naomi explains, right? Remember when we talked about Judah um and Perez, or Judah and Tamar, who's, and then their son Perez and Zerah? Judah says to to Tamar, uh, "Go back to your family until my son Sheila grows up." Right? Because he he didn't want to marry her, him off to to her, because he thought, oh, she's cursed, and now he'll die too. That was the custom. Uh you can see that too in Naomi's words. Yeah, even if I thought there was still hope for me, even if I had a husband tonight and then gave birth to sons, uh would you wait until they grew up? Would you remain unmarried for them?
So the custom was stay with the mother-in-law. And uh
If there's any hope at all, you stay with the mother-in-law. You stay with, you stay with your married family. In a way, Orpah going back to her family was it's saying, there's no hope over there anymore. There's, there's no reason at all for me to stay. Uh I'm doing, I've reached, we have reached the end of the rope. It's over.
Plus, then the dad had to take care of another mouth to feed, and had to try and figure out how to get rid of this older daughter who'd been widowed.
That this, you know, you 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 put it uh very starkly, which was the truth, right? Yeah, it it was, it was a, it was very much a different world that all of a sudden you think back to again, uh I I I I love how all of these stories interconnect. Think back to, back again to Laban. Why did, why did he want to uh marry Leah off to um to Jacob? Uh he had a daughter that he didn't know how he was gonna get her married off. And um and so he put her in a situation that he knew was not ideal. I don't know if you remember that or not, but Laban himself said to his dau- to to Jacob, "Don't you dare take any wives besides my daughters." Because he knew polygamy wasn't ideal, but he thought, oh, I gotta, I gotta get rid of this daughter somehow, and so I'll marry her off to Jacob, because I kind of got him under my thumb. So, um, good question, Del. And it just shows how all of these things, you know, connect together. Next chunk. "But Ruth replied, 'Don't urge me to leave you or to turn back from you. Where you go, I will go, and where you stay, I will stay. Your people will be my people, and your God, my God. Where you die, I will die, and there I will be buried. May the Lord deal with me, be it ever so severely, if even death separates you and me.'" "When Naomi realized that Ruth was determined to go with her, she stopped urging her. So the two women went on until they came to Bethlehem. When they arrived in Bethlehem, the whole town was stirred because of them, and the women exclaimed, 'Can this be Naomi?'" "Don't call me Naomi," she told them. "Call me Mara, because the Almighty has made my life very bitter. I went away full, but the Lord has brought me back empty. Why call me Naomi? The Lord has afflicted me. The Almighty has brought misfortune upon me. So Naomi returned from Moab, accompanied by Ruth the Moabite, her daughter-in-law, arriving in Bethlehem as the barley harvest was beginning."
Okay.
What's that?
I wanna, I wanna go back. I wanna go back to where Ruth decides to to stay with her.
Yep.
What was Ruth thinking? What was her motivation for not going back and for staying with her mother-in-law? Uh she obviously loved her mother-in-law very much.
Uh huh, as did Orpah.
She probably learned that the God of Israel was a was a loving God and not like the idols in her homeland. That could motivate her, and also she she wanted to follow the custom of the day. And uh I just was thinking about what motivated Ruth.
Yeah, yeah. And I I think you can, you can see that partially by, you you look at Orpah and Ruth, and and for the two of them, everything was the same except one thing. Right? The customs of the day were the same, the love for for Naomi was the same. Um and and interestingly enough, um here, it's another one of those places where Ruth is so beautifully constructed. We understand Ruth better because of Orpah, right? We we see her as a foil. Um I mean, for that literary term, a foil is somebody that you compare with somebody else so that you understand them better, spelled just like aluminum foil. Um and now later on in the book, when um when Boaz uh takes Ruth home as his wife, there's another redeemer who's closer than him, and that redeemer says, "No, no, no, I can't, I can't marry Ruth, because that will endanger my own estate." Right? Um and so you have a foil for Boaz as well. How do you understand Boaz so well? Because you have someone to compare him to. So that 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 parallel is a that that uh uh that balance again in Ruth. But um, yeah, what is motivating Ruth? Sure, she loves Naomi. So did Orpah. Sure, there's the customs of the day. Orpah had those too. Yeah, this must have been incredibly difficult for for Orpah to go back to her family and kind of admit defeat. It would have been difficult for Ruth there too, same. What the difference is, is especially here, um, "Your people will be my people, and your God, my God." And who is that God? "May the Lord deal with me." Be it, so she is, she is taking an oath in the name of the Lord, the faithful God. Be with, deal with me, be it ever so severely, if even death separates you and me." Do you get what she's saying there? Not even death will separate us. Why? Because there is life after in the Lord. Right? So jumping back here. That, Del, you're you're you you led right into where I was going. Um, you know, pro and cons. No, that's not a typo. I intentionally left pro singular. Um, when when making a life-changing decision, it can be helpful to make make a list of the pros and cons. Ruth has to decide if she will go back to Moab or to Bethlehem with Naomi. What are her pros and cons? Which list is longer? Well, the only real pro for going is that she's going with the Lord. The only pro that really matters. Um, why did Ruth stay with Naomi? Because of the Lord, her God, because of the faith that Ruth had. Where did? I think that might actually be my next question. Yeah, symbiosis. To uh when we have a relationship that that uh between two people or creatures or anything, where 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 they they help each other live and thrive, right? What had Naomi done for Ruth? Not in this, not on this day, but in the past, what had, what had Naomi given Ruth?
Say it again.
Faith in his true God.
Faith in the true God, right?
Told her her Lord, yeah.
Yeah, and and you can, you can see how well she did that because, you know, that, that, that had taken root in Naomi, or excuse me, in Ruth. Uh I was listening, I I love podcasts. I was listening to one today. Um, it's the the speaker on the podcast said, "In a time of crisis, we do not rise to the occasion. We revert to our training." We do not rise to the occasion, we revert to our training. And he and he used the example of of like especially military. Why do um, you know, why do our troops train and train and train and train and train? So that when the pressure comes, then they respond according to their training. They respond in the way that will will bring victory and success. The time of testing came for Ruth. How did she respond? Probably according to her training. And the training that Naomi had given her. Um she is, she is holding tight to the Lord. What did Ruth do for Naomi? Especially right here. I don't know that it, it, it stayed with her, right? And that that's an incredible comfort.
Maybe lifted her up spiritually by reminding her of the Lord.
You think about that. Naomi? The 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 relationship between the two, uh and I'm just gonna, you know, this last part, that Ruth and Naomi were so different, yet so vital to each other, how did the strengths and weaknesses of each fit together? Um, the the beauty that I see in that, and I've seen it so many times in Christian relationships. If you've been a Christian your whole life, you've always had that fire of faith burning within you. That's a pretty hard thing to put out. Right? It's kind of like an old fire, an old campfire that's been burning for hours and hours and hours, right? What's at the base of that campfire? Coals. Those coals don't just go out like that, right? They, yeah, that that heat is there. When you first light a campfire, though, that's when the kids love it, right? Because what do you get when you first light a campfire? All the dancing flames, right?
Smoke.
You get the smoke, you get the dancing flames, you got all this excitement and energy and and motion, right? Which ones, which ones, which ones are actually a hotter fire? The old one. Which one's harder to put out? The old one. But if you want brightness and joy and activity and all those things, well, then you want the new fire. When you combine those two, then you've got a real great fire, don't you? You throw some new wood on an old fire, that's great stuff. What happens when you take some old Christians, people who have been in the faith for a long time and have that long-lasting heat, and then you throw some new people on there that um that don't, that 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 this is all new for them? What do you end up with? You end up with a really great campfire. Um, I've seen it happen so many times. The joy and the stability, the 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 strength and the excitement. I don't know about you, but I don't know if there's anything more thrilling for me than seeing somebody come to faith. It's fantastic. And it uh you, I think we're gonna, if you if you read the rest of the book of Ruth, you can see how Ruth's bright faith reawakened Naomi's you know, strong, established faith, and then the two of them together. Yeah, God blessed them in amazing ways. So, are you a spiritual Naomi or a Ruth? There's no wrong answer here. No wrong answer here. How do you, how do you view yourself? I, I tend to view myself more of a, more of a Naomi. I, I have, I have no time in my life that I can remember that I, you know, I was, I was baptized in the incubator. Right? Aunt Roberta, hi. I saw you unmuted yourself. What, do you got something to share?
Well, I definitely feel that same way. I was so fortunate to be brought up from baby on, you know, to know Jesus. That's how I feel too.
I heard the hymns in the womb.
Yeah.
That's me as well.
Yeah. Which do you gravitate toward? New believers or established Christians?
New believers.
Yeah, why so?
Well, I don't know if I do. I tend to, to established Christians, but I think new believers have that excitement. So, I think people may tend to gravitate more towards new believers because of their, um, what's the word I'm looking for?
Exuberance?
There's an infectious joy. Yeah, yeah.
I,
They didn't take it for granted.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, it's not, you know, the, the, that last part, is it a good thing or a bad thing? In a way, that's kind of the wrong question. I put it there on purpose. There are blessings to being around each. Um, Charmaine, I don't think that you're actually that, you know, I think you're pretty normal. I think the more established you are in your Christian faith, the more you tend to gravitate toward people who are established in their Christian faith. Right? Because they, they probably um, think a lot of the same ways you do. They probably um, live a lot of the same ways you do. Um, chances are there probably, yeah, a, a, a lot of them would be more of an age with you, all of those things, right?
Right.
The similarity makes you gravitate toward them. Um, a big part of my goal in this Bible study is to encourage us to intentionally seek out and and forge real Christian relationships with people who are of, are of, of a different spiritual maturity level than us. Um, what will that bring into your life? Well, it'll make things messier, right? Uh, oh man, it's a whole lot easier if I'm just interacting with spiritually mature people who uh, uh, make, make, you know, the choices that believers make or this or that, you know? It'll make it more messy, right? Um, it will, uh, it will not always be comfortable. Um, it will probably involve um, a little bit of false doctrine. Because what do people who uh, don't know their Bibles real well, what do they end up doing? Speaking and believing and thinking false doctrine. That's part of the educational process. But we can, we can be blessed by um, yeah, that uh, that interaction and pushing the fire, the fire uh, analogy a little further, what happens when you just keep get adding more and more hot coals to a fire? If you just keep pushing hot coals together in a fire and you never add any more wood? Eventually it goes out, right? If all you ever do is put a match under a pile of wood and expect it to burn, also gonna go out. We need to mix. Right? Having those, those experienced Christians and those, those new Christians all together leads to fantastic outcomes spiritually. When uh, I had the privilege of being a, a, the pastor of a small church in Knoxville, and when I first got there, there was a uh, uh, a, a wonderful established Christian man there who was on my church council. And uh, he, he had a great love for our church body, our synod. I actually served, served on the synagogial council. And in one of our, our church council meetings, uh, he, he, he just said to me, you know, pastor, um, I'm really concerned about our um, our, our stewardship, uh, our per, per, per communicant giving, you know, he knew all the stats, you know, our per communicant giving and our per communicant giving to the synod, I'm really concerned about all these things. Um, this was a congregation of, that was worshiping about fifty people um, on a Sunday and declining. And, and so I said to him, I looked him in the eye as a, you know, twenty-five-year-old and probably spoke a little bit more bluntly than I should have, but I looked at him, I said, Dale, I will be taking action with the express goal of decreasing the level of biblical liter- literacy in our congregation. Decreasing the percommunicant giving in our congregation and decreasing the percommunicant giving to our synod in our congregation. And he looked at me like I was insane, and I said, because new Christians don't do any of those things. Does that make sense to you? A brand-new baby Christian is going to take the average biblical literacy of the congregation down, is going to take the percommunicant giving down, gonna take the average percommunicant giving, giving to the synod down. Um, our problem wasn't that we, that the hot coals weren't burning well enough. Their problem was that we weren't adding any new wood to the fire. We weren't interacting with, with, with any, you know, new people. So, it's a beautiful thing when, when God puts the church together in such a way that we are blessings to each other. I decided to have a little experiment. Um, I don't know how this works. This is a uh, um, because one of the things that um, uh, one of the things that I'm, I'm hoping for, and and I would love your feedback. I'll um, I'll end the recording here in a second. Uh, and I'd love your feedback. I have been, I have thoroughly enjoyed teaching, and I've, I've enjoyed this. I also kind of enjoy the fact that I can put these resources and things here, and that you can take them and you can look at them and you can download them and you can do whatever you want with them, uh, instead of me just like handing you a bunch of pieces of paper in person, and then you use them for an hour and then throw them away. One of the things that I'm hoping to do though is like, I know that there are people watching this not with us, which is great. One of the things that isn't really happening is any discussion outside of this video. Which is one of the reasons why I set up this whole thing in the first place. Now, um, I'm just curious about, do we think that's valuable or not? And do we think that that's um, something that we could do? And I'm intentionally leaving that on the video part so that if anybody sees it who's watching online, um, let me know, you know, say hi. Um, and uh, and if you have something that you want to use in that uh, in that chat, let me know. But this idea is, it's, instead of making the additional discussion questions, I made it an assignment. No, you're not a worse Christian if you don't do the assignment or something like that. No, there are no grades or anything like that. I'm just trying to look at it and say, if there's a conversation happening online, do any of you even know? Are any of you even aware? Do you even get notified? Uh, so, that's part of my question. So, for now, I'm gonna stop the recording and then uh, I'd love to have some of your feedback.